Good evening. This is, according to order, the Tuesday, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting of the Flemington Borough Planning Board. This meeting is called Pursuits and Revisions of the Open Public Meanings Act. An adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Hundred and Twenty Times Democrat Courier-News newspapers on or about January eighteenth or nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted on the door to the Borough Flemington Municipal Building located thirty Park Avenue at any handicapped accessible entrance there, too. Posted on the municipal website, provided as the municipal clerk and distributed to all persons, if any requesting copies of same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. This meeting is a traditional proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and a form appropriate. A judicial hearing must remain contained at all times. Just everyone, please rise for the flag salute.
There, Carol. Mr. Singlehurst, here. Mr. Champion?
I see him like, let's see, I don't know if that's Mike or Donald, I'll check. Mike, is that you?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Doshman?
Here.
Mr. Levin?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman is excused. Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Semino?
Here.
Mr. Echo?
Here.
Mr. Wydra?
Here.
Mr. Show?
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski?
Here.
Ms. McManus?
Here.
Mr. Therico?
Here.
And Mr. Trout?
Here.
Thank you all for coming. Happy Valentine's Day. Just for you to talk. First up on the agenda, as always, it is a period for public comment. Items not currently in front of the board. I don't see any remote participants. If any one of the members of the public here wish to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, see, none will move on. Item two on the agenda, Mayor comments.
Oh, thank you. I just a couple of things last night at the council meeting, we did introduce a revised version of cannabis ordinance that was tabled. And tabled indefinitely. The old version is here tonight, as well as a second cannabis ordinance, one of, as I'm sure you all remember. Removes the downtown business district and the two districts and the artisan village, village artisan district out of consideration for having cannabis locations. We also had a presentation by our planner, McManus, an excellent presentation by she and her partners, Kyle and Ron Anopidis, about the master plan from twenty fifteen, suggestion to create retail downstairs on Main Street. And the Borough Council did positively nod too bad to relate to the planning board attorneys tonight that they want to be forward to see a draft, get public input and council input on it. While the municipal project is in infancy and as soon as possible, so that that economy and scale of storefronts can be enjoyed sooner than later. And I'm sure that's all I remember. If there's more, I am sure Susan Engelhardt will read them for me and fill in the blanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Item three, council comments.
Um, yeah, sure. I said this last night in my report, but it certainly is more affected by our board. I applied for a small grant. That's all we were eligible for to continue our work on the master plan that we had done from February to December of last year. If you remember, we had updated it. But we didn't have enough money in the budget to cover a couple of other things. So we were, so I applied to this grant, hoping that we can write the sustainability element with this money. So cross your fingers, I may hopefully we'll hear from them about that. I want to thank Jeff and Trent and the mayor because they, all three of them, in their own way, big or small, gave me a couple of little bits of information that I needed to get the grant in and submitted on time. So appreciate that help. Mayor already took my comments about the Main Street ordinance, so I won't mention anything in regards to that with the exception of one thing that I've forgotten to mention last night during our discussion, and that was, to be honest with you, I know it was listed in the two thousand fifteen, but we've had that in as a goal since, I think, two thousand. So it's a pretty common thing, and I'm looking forward to seeing that become reality. And then finally, there was another discussion last night in our work session about the center designation. And you know, this is something that we've supported, especially the HPC, worked really hard on this for a while. So last year, we had gone back and forth and watched them work really hard on their revisions of their ordinance, which frankly needed to be done anyway, so that was not a waste by any means. But if you don't understand what a centered designation is, for those of you that weren't, didn't listen in or weren't there last night, basically when the New Jersey, New Jersey created a master plan for the whole entire state at one point, and they designated centers that made sense throughout the state. And of course, us being the county seat, we were the center designation for Hunter County. Makes sense. It makes common sense that you would be a, you would lose that center designation once you were issued it. However, now the state in its infinite wisdom has decided that even if you were declared a center designation by the state, it wasn't something that you, as a municipality, tried to go after and get center designation. Now you have to basically go through a whole bunch of hoops to get re-designated. And frankly, it costs a lot of money. So we've gotten some good things out of the process, like the HPC ordinance revision. But it's, the councils, in the work session yesterday, basically said, you know, I think we need to kind of see what's really in it for us and put a hold on the actual work involved with continuing to go for the center designation. I was asked to see if we can somehow kind of lobby correctly through maybe the leading municipalities to get this kind of onerous pass off of municipalities that were always center designations and frankly always. So that was something that I know this board had discussed a lot at length, and I don't want you to think that we aren't pursuing it in the future. I think we're just putting it on hold. That's it. That's all I.
Thank you. Item four, HPC comments. Dennis, is there anything to report from HPC?
We have our meeting tomorrow night, and we will be providing to the planning board HPC comments on the spice factory application.
Great, thanks, Dennis. Item five, the agenda is approval of minutes from the January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three rate of the meeting, which were distributed by email. I get a motion in a second on the minutes.
So.
Can I get a second?
Engelhardt, sentence.
Any corrections or clarifications?
There was something that I read that I don't remember specifically, and again, it seems small, but I want to make sure it doesn't come to issue. The roof on Dolce is, in the minutes, it says it will be open when it snows or severe weather. I remember the severe weather. Not every time it snows, they're going to open it up. So I just wanted to make sure that it was, the way it's written, it looks like it will be open when it snows or in severe weather. I think it was just severe weather. There are a lot of snow.
Yeah, there was a lot of talk about snow loads, but I remember them saying, we're gonna have it open in snow and off when it's bad weather and snow. Bad weather.
Bad weather. I just want to make sure that we don't have in our resolution.
It's about what pages I'm on.
You know what?
I'm looking at it. Oh, here, I got it. I found it. I got it.
I would just like to make it say in severe weather and let them figure out what the severe weather is. That's all.
Yeah, I know, I agree with it. I think that leads to some interpretation.
I mean, the minutes are one thing, but we want to make sure the resolution is accurate, so you're right.
Well, I do look at them and make sure with my.
That was the only thing that I found.
So can we, with that, strike snow and just leave severe weather? Okay. Any other corrections? We want to make sure that. Okay, so as amended, you know, going to the minutes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Engelhardt, yes. Mayor Carroll, yes. Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Mr. Doshman?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I already called him. Ms. Weitzman? Who really is that? Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Upstream.
It's just Semino?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you. Item six on our agenda this evening, resolution for one-six-one Dolce LLC. That is not, we're not there yet, right? Next meeting?
Because of that change in the minutes.
Well, she had to make the, she had to make the cushions.
I understand. We said this last week, that there are now, we put these are resolutions. Yeah, I get this. All right, so we'll hold that till next meeting. They remember everything. All right. Item seven on our agenda this evening is a completeness determination for BSD Flemington LLC block thirty-nine, lots three and four, which is a preliminary and final site plan application variances. I see Mr. Nussert is here for the applicant.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Stephen Gruber on behalf of the applicant, ESD Flemington Apartments LLC. I have our engineer, Chris Nutzer, with me, in case there are any questions. It does involve the veterans still doing it. So I think the mayor and council person cannot participate, just as a matter of law.
Like, that's.
Yeah.
You okay? Say, would you prefer that?
It is a completeness. It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
That's why.
Okay. Um.
Our deals will get all locked and.
Ask her to just.
That's fine. We are here just for completeness, and I won't go into really great detail other than say that this is exciting, that something's actually happening with this piece of property after a number of applications. And my client is aggressively moving forward on their approvals, and they want to tweak phase two to actually include a lot for, for parking and additional ingress and egress and add thirteen units to the hundred previously approved by the board. It's weird. Have applied for amended preliminary and final site plan approval with the amended relief dealing with the use variance and the floor area ratio. Interestingly, with the addition of lot four, we actually make the impervious coverage percentage better, and the floor area ratio number goes down, even though we're adding an additional property to the development. So we have Mr. Clerico's second completeness review, and I appreciate him actually taking a look at it when he did the first completeness. We addressed a lot of the issues and did a re-submission, and he got another report out in time, and we appreciate that. And in his February eighth, two thousand twenty-three correspondence, I think it's really page six, which is, it narrows down the issues. And the first one is item number forty-nine, which he indicated was incomplete for soil logs for proposed stormwater management system. Those soil lots have since been provided since this February, and I think that information has been provided. I don't know if he's had an opportunity to take a look at it, but Mr. Nutzer did provide that information.
Did you, you are receipt of that, this question?
Yeah, would you like to read it to summarize the report, or?
I mean, at this point, it looks like there's only a couple of things that remain incomplete.
Yeah, you're down to three items. One, which we're saying, you said had, were incomplete. We did get some additional information. I just had a chance to take a look at it tonight. I personally think that's still incomplete. There's still missing information relating to those soil logs. And to the, and to the, whichever kind of premise of the whole stormwater design on that. I don't know how the board wants to deal with that. The way our orders is structured, there's no variance where we have under our stormwater order to comply or you get denied. Some of the elements on the stormwater, perhaps the engineer can fill in the blanks and provide some of it. Some of it is that the additional documentation that was provided is not located on the plan. I'm sure that's easily rectified. Whether they can do the classification on the soils, and this whole thing was premised on, and without going into the weeds on this, it was premised on getting the soils reclassified on the site to be a more, or a deeper, the goal of declassification soil, which is more purpose. Which is the whole premise of how they're assessing the stormwater impact from the development. That goes back to two thousand seventeen is what we make original file, and you still don't, with the district, will estimate the call on this. And they still don't, you know, respond back to the district on that. So I mean, that is kind of correct from an engineering standpoint. If I was hearing this today, I'm gonna have to tell you that it's not sufficient information here to approve that. The other items are all somewhat technical. It was for one waiver, two items that I was recommending, a temporary waiver, which is more procedural than anything else. And they didn't address, the original letter had to remember items were missing, they didn't address all of this in response.
Right, so it's, I agree, it's the soil propagation. That's forty-nine.
I do, yeah.
And your recommendation, I'm just wanting to make sure I got this right, your recommendation was for temporary waivers for checklist items fifty-five and sixty-seven. And then there was also the question about checklist item sixty-eight about traffic givebacks.
That's now been satisfied. They updated the trip counts for the increased units and acknowledged the benefit of the additional movement driveway broads.
So you're okay with that being completed at this point?
Yes, sir.
All right. One last thing. Very good.
So with respect to the soil log information, we did provide it. Mr. Nussler, I think, can indicate that. I think it's the same information that was previously approved, and I'm gonna let him speak to the specifics, since it's more of an engineering issue.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of it, and I'm a little surprised here that there's things about the classification that are an issue here, considering the original application, not the amended application, for lot three is approved and signed, and they're underway on first phase.
Perhaps I need to make myself clear. The, you did provide the missing information for the original lot.
Right.
All he missing is he had to show it on plan, which in fact in itself is not a major issue.
Right.
It's with the new information for the joint, the new lot, the classifications indicating, again, if you go to my report on page. Page four of the report, under item. Well, it's a representative under item P, the soil logs, the documents were sealed, they're now sealed. The testing without witness, that's no open issue. The groundwater, number two, groundwater observations are indicating the soil classification data on, or the new data is not on the sheet. I'm not sure why the information.
There was no groundwater count, so there was no groundwater.
The classification of the soils were not, if not incorporated. If you look at the data he provided, the soil logs forms you're providing for the, for the original lot.
Right.
And they're going to the forms you're providing for the new lot, they just, the information's just not there. Now, maybe you have the information.
I mean, the soil could.
Maybe you can, maybe you can provide it. But it's current, you know, it's currently not there. And close together, I mean. That is, that's, that's.
It was that, and then the testing data for, for lot three, which we provided. I mean, again, for those who are on the board at the time, and actually remember, I mean, we've dug a number of pits on this site. They are very consistent. They are not a surprise, certainly to me, that, you know, I very distinctly remember digging a pit between two existing buildings on the site, filling it with water. We were in rock and doing a basin flood test and coming back the next day, despite the ninety-degree heat and water level remained unchanged. So, you know, we have just failing tests across the site. We don't get any movement in the rock. It's, again, it's not a surprise that it's as tight as it is, and that it just continues on to lot three, sorry, lot four, the new lot. That there just isn't permeability, and that's what we're designed for.
Awesome. So I would argue that we have provided the information, if the sufficiency of the information for purposes of being able to evaluate it on a technical basis is an issue. We would ask for a temporary waiver so that the two engineers can resolve that issue. But we'd like to move forward on the application. I don't think this is anything that's insurmountable to the board's ability to review this application, particularly since it's really an amended application, and we're talking about adding lot four for a parking lot purposes, which is the only thing that these issues would actually be pertinent to. Where, you know, we've provided actually everything, including that, and there may be a dispute as to whether the plan should be revised to include the classification on it or not. But I think it could be dealt with by the board by a temporary waiver, since we're also doing temporary waivers for the other two items in Mr. Clerico's report. And the traffic impact statement, it's actually been found to be sufficient. But we're really down to three issues, and we're aggressively pursuing it to try and get before you to do a public hearing.
Understood, but it's, I know you're saying amended. We have, this is not an amendment. We have to treat this as a new site plan, even though I know it is a site that has already had prior approvals in place, but because of what it is. So we have to just be careful with how we're calling this, but I understand the point of wanting to proceed. One thing we have done in the past is to grant a waiver, but not schedule public hearings until our board's professionals have, you know, guaranteed they've got what they need in order to do a timely review. And if the board is so inclined, that may be, that may be a path forward here. So it sounds, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, is that you need more information. He might actually have it, but he hasn't given it to you in a way that you need to do the review.
But that could very well be, I don't know. I'm just looking at, and again, I just looked at the stuff tonight, so.
Yeah.
I would have had this conversation we do earlier, but literally an hour before the meeting is when I was looking at the information, so.
And even now, I think it was based on the conversation we had last week, I need to think we would get to that point, so.
It might have been better if I didn't.
Well, I would actually request is the temporary waiver, so that we can schedule the public hearing, because I don't think these issues are something that.
Be very clear, okay? If we schedule a public hearing, I'm immediately going to review, detail the review of the application and documentation. I'm telling you right now that our comments on the stormwaters, they're not substantiated by the data that we have on record.
And I understand that, but that.
Just so the board knows, that's where we're gonna go. I'm not saying there's a problem necessarily with how the city is designed, based on a set of assumptions that are supposed to be supported by factual information, and the factual information support that premises is not.
And I think in the interim, we can provide that factual information and satisfy you with respect to that. But in order to get the process moving along, scheduling the public hearing, I think, would allow us to move forward. And I don't think this is something that's gonna potentially get done in one night anyhow. We did a public hearing, and you can always continue it until we satisfy your technical review on it, so.
So if I may just share, what we've done in the past, we used to do exactly what you're saying, and then we kind of got caught up in a little conundrum where we had a hearing scheduled, an applicant noticed for the hearing, and then continuously did not provide the information that was needed to complete the technical review. So we were adjourning, 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 and decided that wasn't the way that we wanted to go. So this hybrid way that we figured out is the board can certainly deem it complete by granting those temporary waivers, since the completeness determination has to be made by the board. We don't allow the engineer to do it themselves. But as soon as that information is provided to Bob, and he indicates that he has it, as soon as he then advises the board he has it, then we'll go ahead and schedule a hearing.
And quite honestly, this may be able to be fairly quick. It's just, it's just a matter, we want to make sure that, because we're talking about stormwater, right, and not only do we have, our engineer needs to do the review. We have an environmental commission that needs to have its adequate time to do review. They need to have all the materials. You know, they only meet monthly, right? So we want to make sure that we're within that forty-five day window, that they have to be able to provide comment before the commencement of a public hearing. So we just want, we just want to be careful, and I think this is.
It's a procedure that we followed, and as quick as you guys get that in, and it may very well be that you have a call tomorrow, and he realizes he has everything, in which case you can reach out to me, we reach out to Eileen, we schedule the next available hearing, and then we're done.
Yeah, so in other words, it's not like we have to wait to another meeting before the board.
Exactly. No, that's correct. Correct.
And that, yeah, we, we're trying, we're trying to move it along. We just don't want to get stuck not being able to proceed.
Yeah, I thought I was gonna have to wait to another meeting and then get authorized to go to another meeting.
If the information is available, and we can quickly determine that it's sufficient, then we can find the next, I mean, there's still those requirements, you know, it's a D variance and all the rest of it. So there's, there's, we're looking at, we're not looking at our next meeting anyway. Regardless, we're looking at the meeting after that, at the earliest, so.
We found that that's worked pretty well, not get us stuck in the same situation.
That's fine, then.
If one element of this that is gonna probably have to get somehow during the hearing process, that, I mean, that's part of it, after you read this, that was the product protocol and board setup, you know, in the past, and that's what we did on that, that's.
Right, we had done on the original one.
So that's something in the interim that could be scheduled relatively quickly, and because you're actually in the technically wet season right now, which is plenty profitable time for doing this, doing this. Like I said, some of the stuff, showing this past deal testing on the matter, I'm sure you have that. Whether you have the data to fill out the forms, but they don't, we can have that conversation tomorrow. But like I said, I wouldn't be such a stickler on this, but it is stormwater. The rules stated imposed on municipalities are pretty, you know, are pretty hard and fast, and the, you know, the municipality was audited at some point by the DEP. It would look at something and say, when you didn't follow the rules, you're not your violation of your commitment. So it's something, it may sound very technical, it may sound somewhat trivial, but it's, it is, it is important, so.
So what we are looking for is to, what I'm looking for is a motion to deem the application to be subject to temporary waivers for checklist items forty-nine, fifty-five, and sixty-seven, acknowledging that testimony tonight, our traffic engineer, is that item sixty-eight is now completed, this is complete, and that a date of a public hearing to be determined once our board's engineer says he's got what he needs.
And is that, that last piece will be part of the motion to, because we just deem it complete with temporary waivers?
That's included, why not?
Right, right. So, so, yeah, so I'll move that with the inclusion that the public hearing date will be scheduled upon receipt to Bob's office of.
Then you're technically starting the clock on your timeline to adjudicate the application.
Yeah. All right. Tom moves. Do I have a second? Eleven seconds. Thank you. Any further board discussion? Okay.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Mr. Champion, hold on, Mike is, I, 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 hold on. Try again, Mr. Champion.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry.
Mr. Doshman?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
It's just Semino?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah. Have a good night, everybody.
Sure.
All right.
Mr. Doshman? Wondering if you can make an explanation. I heard them reference adding a lot. Could you make an explanation to the public?
The application, the prior approvals had to do with lot three. This is now including lot three and lot four.
Where is lot four?
They can show you math, it's right, you can sit to it, right behind you.
Well, I'll go on this.
Yeah.
Is it a larger project than was first approved?
I really should. I don't know. What was, I went on the board of those first. Sorry. Item eight is a informal discussion for Swinset Warehouse, eighteen Parker Avenue, also known as Region twelve. And I at least sent out some sketches just for one of our newer board members. We encourage folks who are coming in without to kind of informally talk about stuff if there's, to kind of work through some issues. Quickly, you get fifteen minutes. We'll let you, you may not need all of it. We'll let you, you may not need all of it, but just to kind of. Take a pulse of the board and see how to proceed, so, uh. Please, uh, we can introduce yourself, everybody.
Thank you, I'm Pax Cirillo, I'm returning to town. Um, this is an application, uh, we're here with, uh, my client, Mr. Santos, who, who, um, had, um, with. His partner here, uh, Peter, a, uh. Boy Kingdom, which used to be near the Wendy's, uh, right, uh, right in town. By the circle, and that property is now no longer available, so they want to. Re-institute their business, um, the place we found. Um, that's available is the old, um, Sam Einstein and the Del Einstein Realty Office, uh, right off Route twelve, uh, Parker Ave. So. Um, Mr. Klein has indicated that it's zoned for what we want to do, we're just gonna sell swing sets and sheds like. In that it's our kingdom. No changes to the building, no changes to, um, maybe signage, whatever sign is there. They would maybe change the sign, other than that, they just want to, um, put the sheds out and the swing sets out. Around the property, uh, and then, um, some of them would be, uh, within the parking, it's a very large concrete patio. Probably is already beyond the impervious surface, carbon, yeah, it's very resistant, I don't know, but. Um, Mr. Klein said it is, it is permitted use in the zone, uh, we have no changes, we're just gonna put the sets out there, they'll use the office. They don't really need that whole building for what they do. Uh, but it's there, so the idea would be. We need to know, do you. Would you think we need a site plan application for this, would we just need a zoning permit and, and go at it, uh, it was a, you know, as you know, a realtor's office. Uh, and then it was nothing. Uh, it's been empty. Um, switching that use to a retail sale of these sheds and, and swing sets, so. We, uh, wanna know from you all what you think.
I just had a question, so I think the site is in the CB, the Community Business Zone District.
Excuse me, can we use the microphone?
So I think that this site is in the CB, the Community Business Zone District, and you said that Jeff Klein had indicated it was permitted use, I'm just wondering, did you get a zoning permit from him or any?
I just made a phone call when, uh, we found the property that was available to, to lease, I said we should call somebody.
I agree.
Uh, so, uh, Mr. Klein did return my call and, and when I told him what we were doing, he said, he thought it was permitted use. In that zone, I don't know, because I haven't looked at the ordinance.
So. I think I'm ultimately, I think it's fine, I'm the planner for the board, I think it's fine, we'll defer to the zoning officer in the borough on these questions, but. The, the CB district permits a variety of retail uses and, and that's certainly true, but I'm not. Uh, I'm not sure that. Uh. Uh, outdoor equipment sales or outdoor, um, display, it's some sense, however you want to describe it, is listed as one of them, so I just want to give. Give a heads up about that question.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the thought would be, based on whatever your direction is here. Um, if it's not a site plan application. Issue, have them apply for your zoning permits, as if Mr. Klein. Proved it, then we're.
So, hold on, before we even start, the, the concern that I have in light of this is. Technically, if there's any sort of use variance issue, any kind of de-variants, this board can't even really do their recommendations. So it might be better off just kind of cutting this off right now, throwing, taking care of that, and if everything's copacetic. Then come back and, and either make your application, come before the board, or then come back.
Yeah, so, so, yes.
Yeah, recommend you get it, you apply for zoning permit, get the document, and then we can have that conversation.
That's, that's good. Yes.
Four years ago, the zoning may have been different, I don't know, so that's a great. It's a great way to go, thank you, that's what we'll do, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day, and, uh, you know. We love, hopefully, uh, hopefully, everything will go well, and we don't need to, I just, we wanted to see you, that's. Thank you, thank you. All right. All right, um, item nine on our agenda this evening. And items spent on our agenda this evening. Are the ordinances that, um. That we talked about in our last meeting. Two thousand twenty-three oh two and two thousand twenty-three oh three. Uh, here's the problem, um, I never saw them. Uh, the acting clerk never transmitted them to. The board secretary, the board secretary never sent them around to the rest of us. I don't know if anyone on the, anyone on the board, other than the mayor or. Uh, our council leaders has actually seen these ordinances.
Then they have promised us, I didn't, I didn't even think that, that, that.
And I was definitely able to, you had sent them out.
That was before, that was.
That was the first, that was the old.
And I, I thought they were relatively the same.
Now they were changed, and the reason why we didn't talk about it last one was because they had to get changed, and they went back for, for first reading, so we've not seen them, and I am. I, I am reluctant to proceed, nobody on the board is, other than the mayor and, and, and council member, but a chance to. See them, and I'm, I'm, I. I would feel like we are. Unable, having not gotten them, to be able to hold a hearing to determine. Anything at this point, and I don't care, like, what, where, where, what we do with this?
Um. Well, if the board wants to wait, we could certainly do it on the twenty-eighth, I mean, the board has thirty-five days. To review and ordinance refer to them and make recommendations, inconsistencies to, you know, who we typically review ordinances, so. I mean, technically, we couldn't move it if the board's uncomfortable to the twenty-eighth. Right, is that our next meeting?
That's our next meeting is the twenty-eighth.
I think it's appropriate to implement the planning board to a due diligence. And we'll move the hearing to schedule for the twenty-seventh to March, whatever it is, I don't fucker.
Okay. I appreciate that, I, I just.
I also apologize, I.
That would be the thirteenth, and then land, I guess that it remains the day before meeting.
Thirteen sounds right.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that, our March meetings are, this is the thirteenth.
And I will personally let our.
Yeah, I mean, just, and I, and I know we've had a change in staff, and so generally what's happened in the past is that the day, even the night of the council meeting, when there's an ordinance that requires us review. Clerk just sends it to Eileen, and Eileen sends it out to the board, and we know, I mean, again, I just, none of us have had a chance to see it. Yeah. So I'm gonna ask that we defer these until our next hearing, we've got a chance to look at them. Um. Those are items nine and ten, is there any objections to take with those to our next meetings? No. Okay, so we're gonna. Move on to item eleven, chair items.
Sure, I think that's the twenty seventh.
Our twenty eighth.
Sorry, the twenty one.
Twenty eighth.
Uh, uh, sorry. It'll be on, it, thank you, sorry, I'm getting counsel, I'm getting counsel finding.
Yeah, if I could, if I could, if we, if, you know, council could just move its pub, second reading public hearing to March, whatever.
March thirteenth.
Yeah, yeah.
Only ours to February twenty-eighth, and then everyone's happy.
Yep, yep, yep.
Lot of it, that'll cover.
Leave myself enough to request those. Or, thank you.
Shouldn't have to.
You should, you need to come through, but.
I understand, but I.
And I also consider like we have, like, I know HPC is, doesn't have a requirement or review ordinances to say what we do, but they've got a meeting coming up and environmental conditions, like, there's just. Everyone has, gets what they need to get, um. All right, uh, item eleven is chair items, uh, so that, those two things will be on our. Uh, next meeting on the twenty-eighth. Um. We will have the resolution for Dulcey on the twenty-eighth. We will certainly not have. Spice Factory, that's gonna be certain, that'll be at a large, at a minimum, um, I think, is there anything else agenda-wise that you have for the twenty year?
No, uh, just, you had one of the report, uh, the bylaws, um, I will have.
Well, I know by that, okay, good. Uh, good. Um. Uh, I, I did want to just report that this is under chair items, that I did transmit a letter of support. Um, that Susan had mentioned about the, uh, small brand for, uh, the sustainability elements of the master plan, so just for the record, I. Sent the letter. That. Basically said, we should, we need to do this, and so, so just, just to report that publicly, and, um. Anything else under chair items? I had a, just one thing, um. Environmental Commission has met again. Uh, just want to make sure that whenever, I guess you send stuff out to HPC reviewed, you could also send that to Environmental Commission.
Uh, yeah. Oh, okay.
Or mayor.
Yeah, I, I generally have been sending it to the council liaison for distribution, because I don't have all.
Yeah, you said, but when I get it from you all, sure, and I.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Excellent, anything else under chair items?
Sure, I did have a question, I'm calling from the council meeting last night, so I don't know, it might be something that you would see in the normal map, and. I'm sponsoring. There was discussion about an issue with sewage that happened in the courthouse square. And, um. And some of BPW ones, heroes and the whole thing, but I was extremely concerned that it's now like the third. Near miss with, almost a miss with, with our square issues. And I was wondering, is this, is that supposed to be? A group that's liaising with the developer on what we need to happen and what we need to make sure happens, to make sure these. Incidents that will stop.
So, a couple of things about that, um. I just asked, uh, our wonderful secretary for the resolution from the planning board. To see exactly what was in there regarding community, um. Component to weigh in on, on issues like that, but I also want to say that. What happened with that sewer issue, uh, was a failure by the contract, the subcontractor. Who did not contact the engineer on record to inspect. Work after it was completed per their permit.
Right.
So, um. There was a meeting with. All parties, including myself. Um. And, uh, our new engineering firm. Uh, that made it crystal clear that the new, that, that we were pulling their permit and rewriting it, because they failed to. Um, properly. Follow the rules, and now they have to give our new engineer forty-eight hours' notice prior to opening water rows. And that our inspector will be there the entire time, it's open. Uh, because it, it was. What happened was, um. Uh. It just, it never should have happened.
Right.
And, and they had no recourse to argue with us because. They never called out our inspector.
Right.
Had they done that and the problem happened, then it would have been a different story.
Okay.
And we also called them to give them first crack at fixing it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but it was the night of one of the, the, um. Oh, gosh, I'm not a football, I'm not a football person, though, not the Super Bowl, but the, the games before, it's the championship games for that, the divisions. And they would come out.
Cool.
So they didn't come out, or Shelby were heroes and came out.
No, but there.
No.
But we do have in the resolution, I don't know whether it was monthly, quarterly, that there was structure.
Now, that was a question that there were open monthly meetings versus weekly. What the, there's, there's, I can't even remember how many meetings our new engineer required, I had to make sure. But, uh.
And that, that, that.
I was told that is, is the council board angle hard brought up to me regarding this. Component that was approved by the, by this group, uh, in the resolution, so I just want to see it, and then we'll make sure it's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm taking that down to, I think, yeah, I, I kind of had a little chip that last night at the meeting, because I. I, I think I've been. Bitching about this for months, that there, that we, I know what we put in our resolutions, we made it very clear what we wanted. So, um, the, not only was the. Uh, resident liaison, which I think, um, somebody in the paper made fun of me that I required that resolution when we wrote it, so that's lovely. Um, and then a number, the other thing that was mentioned last night that didn't, didn't get mentioned here was that I also pointed out. That, uh, during writing the resolution, there was a lot of pushback exactly how much they were gonna. Pave Bloomfield, if you remember, they were literally saying twenty feet from the, and it was, instead of the entire road, it was, like, there was a little bit. Little bit left, so, um, that resolution will also be researched for that as well.
I, I did, I, I mean, you started to do that.
Right, and I appreciate you doing it, so those are the two things that I had.
That I forgot, I forgot that was something we could talk about, but I did not forget to ask for that.
No, I know you didn't, I did, I wasn't mentioned here, so I wanted to mention it, but thank you.
So, thank you, that was the crux of what I was concerned about, is that we, it's not just having a community liaison, um. Which I'm pleased, it's not, it's not just about the community liaison, it's that we as a borough. Should be able to ask more things of this developer for them to provide for the safety. Of this construction project, major, the biggest construction project in recent years and in the borough, to be done safely for everybody. So I'm really concerned that we make sure that happens, and I'm glad to see now, that that change is happening, that we are. Making them all accountable, and I really appreciate seeing that.
Remington Burnick is, is on it, um. Uh, they're excellent communicators, uh, you know, I mean, maybe this is an appropriate time share, just to mention that starting on or around the middle of March. Um, there are going to be major, major complex inconveniences in this town with Main Street being closed. Uh. Holy or in part for seven months as part of this project. Bluefield Avenue is gonna be closed for some time, traffic's gonna get routed out to Main Street, all while Elizabeth Town Gas is continuing their project. Which includes Maine and mine and some other roads, so, uh, Remington Burnick has taken. This on to coordinate everybody, um, we've already started developing signage for communication. Uh, we're gonna get traffic signs out on Main Street, uh, soon to let, inform the motorway public. So they have weeks to see a sign, because we don't have a lot of. Uh. Really good communication in this town, because we don't hard mail a newsletter and not everybody does the internet, so we're gonna be reaching out through. The library, through, um, storefronts, through the county clerk's office, which a lot of people go to. Uh, it'll get mailed into the sewer water notices, which. A third of the town gets it at a time, so we'll get it to people in February and March before stuff starts, the April group will be a little late, but it'll be on Main Street, so. It is gonna be massively nasty in Flunington for seven months, starting sometime in March. So I, I think it's appropriate to prepare for those, I too.
I think we had planned for that, I think that, we, I do remember. Do remember.
So it's gonna be, it's gonna be dead, because as well as, not only are they gonna be doing the sewer water lines. But they're also, they're also going to be delivering steel, which requires them to do that on Main Street as well, because they never took that into account, that their. Trucks, their delivery trucks and the crane and everything couldn't do it on Spring Street. So it's just gonna, it's gonna be a, a mess, a hot mess for the hot summer.
Yeah, I also wanted, I had that new invention last night, that, that, um. The resident ladies are max listed in the, and that's listed as a requirement in the, in the planning resolution, isn't. Someone that has pre-con meeting, so would, whoever. However, the reach out to the residents is and that regular communication with the residents, specifically the ones that border the site. Um, that still needs to be worked out, that's what I got the intention.
Yeah, I'd like to see the regulation, yeah, I would say that level for here, no.
Thank you.
All right, um. All right, um, was there anything with the bills?
Yeah, something was brought to my attention, we just did a recent billing update, and I think that some of the billing. The private billing figures may have, it sounds like, been transposed, so I'd like to pull all the bills of these hours. From tonight, go back and take a look at them.
Is there any problem about, like, pulling all the, just doing all the bills at the next meetings or anything to?
I don't want to stop anybody else, though.
Maybe we could just pull the one.
Yeah, well, well. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think emotionally, we.
Twenty-three dash zero zero two five nine is the one question.
So we pulled that one, and then.
And we, and I will, uh, forward that decision to Bill Hens and, um. Rebecca Newman, so that.
Okay, so Tom moved that, yes, so, thank you.
Sorry, that was. Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Carol?
Yes.
Mrs. Imar?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Doshman?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Miss Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Samina?
Yes. All right, um, professional reports, Jay, I said I was gonna need you, and, and I, I, you've been a saint, I'm sorry. Can I state a comment, because, because the cannabis stuff, we were talking about parking and traffic, and I wanted him to be here for questions, but. Sorry.
I was here, I was here for spite.
Here for spite, uh, but.
Apologies to your Valentine, Chris.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, no report, um, for those of you that are on my, uh, ordinance, special win, ordinance committee, give me two minutes after this meeting, I just need to finalize the date and time, we're gonna do that in person, I'll send you know.
Sounds good, all right, so Kara, we were talking about. Sounds good, all right, so Kara, we were talking about, uh again, we are trying to comply with Daniel's law. And make sure that we're fully in compliance with that, um we are trying to make sure that. Documents that have been published on the borough website of ongoing applications stay there, but we also wanna make sure that minutes and all that other stuff doesn't run afoul of the law, so. What can you tell us?
So since the last meeting, I've reached out to.
Could you use the microphone?
Of course, Lois, absolutely, um reached out to a number of council for different municipalities, boards, county entities and. Talked to clerks, administrators who have attended actual seminars on this topic. Uh provided by county and state entities and. No one really has very clear indication procedurally how to put this into play, number one. Number two, the advice and clarification I handed you, what I've seen is the best one so far from uh associate council for the native municipalities. Trying to answer and clarify some things, um it's wonderful, it answers a lot of good questions. When you start pulling the language of some of the statutes that it references at the end, there's inconsistencies. So, you know, it is what it is, it's a, it it is a legislation that has been enacted that we must comply with. But trying to procedurally figure out how, not only for entities like the governing bodies, but then for people like us that have the different. I wanna say set of rules, but different considerations um to take into account, such as what we talked about at the last meeting. Um what I'd like to do uh to chair with the boards, uh okay, is to put together a list of options for how you can handle things. One of the things we've done is we've put together a a letter that uh members that wanna come to speak. But do not want to provide their address, covered or not. Um can sign and indicate that they understand that by not doing that, this board may or may not give the appropriate amount of weight to their location, things of that nature. I mean, it needs to be, we've just started looking at it, um and also possibly a situation where um a two hundred foot list for each application is provided. So in those instances where the address does become important, more important than in just general public comment. We can look to see if that person is on the two hundred foot list and say, well, members, this person is on it. But then again, that also has its own issues, when we have a number of rental facilities where those individuals would not be getting noticed, but the owner of the overall. Um apartment building or group of buildings will be getting noticed, so there's a lot of different things to to take into account, so. I'd like to go give the board a list of options and things to consider, and then the board can weigh them and so think about how I'd like to proceed.
Can I ask a question, but based on this law, where does the onus fall? Is it on the person that's protected, you say, I am a protected individual, please strike my name and address, or do we need to look and see who's protected?
You need to read.
So, well, when I say.
The answer to both your questions is yes.
Yes, because if you look at the the one specific part in there, which is what information is prohibited from being published, what can be redacted. It goes through, and that seems to be very, very clear, and then you look at the actual statute reference at the end, you go to that statute and. Not completely different, but there's a nuance in it that goes directly to your question, is the onus on the. Governing body entity to automatically do that, because there's no longer a public record, considered a public record under Oprah? Or is it incumbent upon the person that wants themselves to be redacted to register with the Office of Protection out of D C A? And then, there's even a rapture of thirty one days later, that's when the onus becomes on the municipality to make this effective. So take your pick, Russian roulette, pick which one you wanna go with.
So we're, so so Kara's gonna come up with some ideas, I'm I'm asking everyone, please read this. At our next meeting, we'll be able to talk through how we wanna proceed, we're in a fortunate spot right now that there aren't any pending applications. Yet, but we're about to have one with uh with Spice Factory, you know, we wanna make sure that we're we're complying with with procedure moving forward. Um we've got any number of things like, one of the requirements is that note, the two hundred foot notice is printed on one of the pages of the plans. Like that's, that's what we do on all of our plans, and if one of the people listed on is 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 registered with the state, we don't. We 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 have to figure out how we wanna handle that, right, we can't make those plans available for the public, except. We also need to know who's too, like, like, so that's what we're gonna figure out, like, a lot of those kinds of things out there.
Sometimes they are actually changing the tax records in the tax assessor's office and which goes to the tax collector. Where your name has, just had the address, and then the name is is completely removed, and it's just the. Fifty Main Street is fifty Main Street is is the property owner.
But you automatically know they're on the list or something.
Well, you know, exactly, it flags everything, like.
Right.
It's that.
Dilemma.
Right, so, so where.
Not to mention the internet still exists.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we, so I'm asking everyone, please, just take, take, this is not long, but before our next meeting, give it, give it some some thought. Kara's gonna come up with some recommendations, and we're gonna have to, as a board, decide, you know, agree of policies that we're going to um. Adopt to make sure that we're in compliance, but also, you know, on on all sides of all aspects of this, so just, we're still working on this. Um all right, and then um is there anything to go to executive session? No, can I get a motion adjourned? All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned at seven fifty six, thank you, happy Valentine's Day.
Bye bye.